Are you taking it?
Ready.
I am.
I'm ready.
You ready Monica?
I'm ready.
Alright, I called this special study session, Governing Board School District One meeting to order at 5:30 six AM. Mr. Sheldon.
Well, welcome everyone. Okay, so glad we're here. We tried in June if you remember. So that's the time to get together and do this. But it's not that easy. We have busy people. So I want to thank everybody for being able to be here and we anticipate that this is going to be the first in a series of sessions. And we don't anticipate that tonight is going to be there's going to be any kind of product that comes out of this. Tonight we anticipate a process and to make progress toward developing norms, goals, and procedures so that we can become a highly effective board, a highly competent board. I want to thank our executive admin for being here. We were I was doing a little math. We have like more than 50 years' experience of district level experience among the five of us. So I think it's great that they've been able to be here and participate in the discussion. This is the board's meeting. But our administrators, given the variety of roles and the experience that we all have in district-level leadership, I think provide great perspective and background knowledge. So when I went this summer, I went to a superintendent's collaborate with a group called NCEP, National Center on Education and the Economy. And I was sitting with a group of superintendents and somebody said something that hit me. They said, "A school board, if you have one new member, you have a new board." And I thought, I hadn't thought of it that way. And then it occurred to me, it's June. That means that this is our third board in a year and a half. Right? We had one new board member in January of '22, another new board member in January of '23. So it's just that perspective. And then he was saying, so it's important every time you have a new board, which means you have a new member or more than one member, it's important to go back to the fundamentals of the foundations and make sure that there's a shared understanding of the expectations, of the roles, responsibilities, and so on of being a school board member. So a good part of what tonight is going to be is kind of walking through some of that. Basically, we'll walk us through some things tonight. And then we're going to, we're going to talk about goals. We're going to talk about expectations the board has for itself, expectations the board has for the district, for the superintendent, and then how we can go about monitoring and evaluating that. We're going to stop at 7:45. If we finish early, we finish early. If we're not finished, we're going to wrap it up and we're going to leave at 7:45. It is worth evaluating plenty of time. If anybody else is like, "Shh," my wife's expecting me and I hate her. So yeah, we want to, we've got a few housekeeping things at the end that we want to go through as far as next week's law conference and setting a date for our next meeting. Just again, I hope, I think we can make some good progress tonight. We can get to know each other a little better, have some good conversation, and commit some headway toward toward establishing those foundations for becoming a highly effective team.
Thank you. Right, along those lines, as he mentioned, talking about the board and a new board, one of the things that we need to think about before we even come together as a five-person governing board and even this bigger governance team, which is, as I was doing some research this summer, seeing executive administrators and boards working together as a governance team. Big picture, biggest picture, and then down to the management at the school level. It was interesting to me to think about, well, what will we all bring to the table? So we made some table tests for you with your name on it. If you could turn the blank side face to you and grab something to write with, you all have these little markers, a marker, a pen, whatever you like to use. Every team has something to share. And on the back, I'd like you to write words that come to mind that describe you. Who are you? Who do you represent? What is, what are your roles in your life? And I'm not talking governing board really. And it could be, that's the first thing that you think of, is governing board member. When I did this exercise with my husband, the first thing he said, of course, was coach. And I said, "Give me more," and he said, "Farm boy." Most people would not look at him and think farm boy, but he still thinks at age three that he's a farm boy. He thought organizer. So that's a big part of his life, that he has organized many things. So take a few moments to write down four or five words that describe you, that are roles that you hats that you wear, things that you do that make you who you need to be.
And personal?
Personal. And my second one is caregiver. It'll take about 30 seconds to wrap it up. I'm going to take two minutes to share with your elbow partner. So Jamie worked with Adele, Dennis with Anthony, Lou, and you, so about a minute each to share with your partner the roles that you have, and maybe if there's a reason or something to scan through, why you chose that. Can we wrap up the conversation? We should both have a chance to share. So we, we go around the table and she can share something that you found intriguing about your partner or something that really, really want to identify about yourself. But if you could turn these around, I think you can all see each other. But I'm going to start with Suzie, and then we'll both finish up with me. Suzie, what's something that you wanted to share from your conversation or what you wrote?
So it was pretty funny because Keith had grandpa on there. I didn't have grandma on there. So you know, like, grandma.
Family roles.
Right.
We have similarities, you know, I put family, that's just family.
It's different.
I think mine's almost surrounded by U-Mark. U-Mark, start by having your, your, of course, family's here.
Let's meet.
Well, Teresa, I love the word that you used there. She used the word connector. And I just, you know, and just to think about who she is, about how she connects them, and just that, I think, I just think that's a great word to describe yourself or other people and those connections that we make with each other.
And I was really enjoyed listening to Dwayne. I didn't realize he was such an accomplished musician. He's a fire director.
Jamie?
Well, this is my 37th year of education in U-Mark. And pretty much all I've done is, all I can really think of is like, who I am, okay, my relationship, right? Father. And I'm an educator. And then for the last 29 years, I've owned a historic home, which like takes the rest of my time. It's amazing, being an educator, how much that, how much of your life and your identity that consumes.
Well, I found out that Jamie is a historic homeowner, not that he's a historian. I too own a historic here, historic home.
That's going to be a lot.
Who knows that?
Good deal. One of the things that Mr. Darren shared was that he's a big fan of the outdoors and activities, he likes to go outside. That's why I didn't know that about him. So it's kind of cool to hear, um, hear that aspect. So mine's mostly just family stuff.
And I just want to say that I've been impressed with Dennis since I first met him. He's really well here. But the other thing, I like about him, he's such a family-oriented guy. And that's fantastic. So I'm even more impressed with him now.
Thank you.
We connected a lot on family, on goals, everything, but also we said, "Mr. G's customer." I'm going to steal that one.
The third role we connected with was coach guy. You know, in her past experience, also my experience right now as a teacher director, how do you coach employees? How do you coach supervisors in different moments, especially when you have tense moments, right? How do you get your resolutions? So we get up to a lot of those things.
And then as you said, coach. Thinking of myself, as I was a coach of students and athletes, I feel I'm more of a coach of adults. Even my adult grandchildren, when I try to coach them through life situations, because being a grandparent is important. In my life, we have 16, and many of whom we've raised in our home. And so that's an important part of my life. But seeing that, I don't have to worry about every little detail, but maybe being by their side and trying to help coach them is important. But Jamie hit on something I think that we all touched on. If we look at the things that we wrote down, we wrote down a lot that has to do with relationships, your relationships with other people, whether you're a part of your family or the activities that we do and those connections that we make in those relationships. So we all bring something to the table, but that kind of transitions to our next piece of the puzzle, which is how do we operate as a governance team? So we bring these skills and these relationships and these activities and experiences to a bigger unit that makes us a strong team. And so that's the next thing that we're going to explore is the boardsmanship piece. And I see that we have a total boardsmanship, a total board, boardsmanship award. And boardsmanship has many facets to it. And when we first started talking about boardsmanship as a topic, one of the first things, of course, that I equated to is sportsmanship. Sportsmanship being how you treat others when you are participating in an athletic event and how it's better to when I was playing basketball, you had to raise your hand when you committed a foul. Yes, it was me. And that you, when the ball rolls away, you go pick it up and you hand it to the ref. And I know an athletic director that I worked with, and he, he believed in gamesmanship. So when the other team came, he would turn up the heat in the locker room so that the other team would be uncomfortable, so that they would be sweating before the game started. He didn't, there weren't enough towels in the locker room. So he wanted to set up a situation that hurt the other part of the group that was they were playing against, whereas we were raised. And, and what I think we do is trying to say, when someone comes to our district, we want to give them such a great experience that they walk away saying, "Wow, I'm so impressed. I had a great experience in the office," or at a board meeting, or wherever it happens to be. So keeping in mind that boardsmanship role we have in our folders, groups of some policy, and if you go to the policy manual online or in a board book, you'll see that the Bs have to do with the board. And so today, like, we're going to have our elbow partners go through some of the different policies. And again, like we, we just did, share out a little bit about what strikes us. So you're welcome to look at all of them, but I'm actually going to assign elbow partners the different little pieces. Let's see. You and I can take, Luciano and I will take communication one. Please to know where.
BHC?
BHC and BHD. So we've got that. Okay, Mr. Sheldon and Adele and Teresa and Dwayne, why don't you, both of your groups, take BBA, because that's pretty big. And then Dennis and Anthony take BBAA and BCA.
BBAA.
BCA. Hang on.
I made last-minute changes, so it's.
That's okay. That's just because of the way they're organizing. I'm not, I'm not seeing what I was thinking. And then Keith and Suzie, why don't you also take BCA? Do I have it uncovered?
Okay, so we're doing BCA.
So we're doing BCA.
BCA.
I think we need to do a little orientation part.
All 938 pages.
Okay, Jamie and Adele, you guys do BBA. Then and then you and Dwayne and Teresa, you guys do the same one. Okay, and then you guys do BBAA and BCA. And then Suzie and me, you also do BBAA and BCA. And then we will do
BHD.
Yes. Okay, very great. So take a few minutes, I'll take two minutes for you to scan through. And please annotate, use a marker, a sticky, a highlighter. Underline, circle, check mark. Point out things that you want to remind, you want to remind yourself, and that you're going to share with your partner. Okay, I'll shut up. Now, would you please turn to your elbow partner and highlight what stood out to each of you and be ready to share with the larger group, maybe some of the things that you might need to know before or that we need to recall, we should remember, maybe we haven't been following. I don't know. There you go.
I like the first, the first one, please. The person who worked through like those decisions, I think, if I'm there, I guess, but then, yeah, you can do things through email or something like that. So that's like good reminders of the good advice. I mean, there must be a point, I just don't know what it is. It's like you're.
Trust our supervisors, do well with the right.
Right, you know, yeah, I think a lot of that comes definitely with the trust piece, like.
I'm not looking for.
You know, so much.
Because I trust.
What you're, I'm just trying to be comfortable with. Did I do my first one? Just having been, like, already in the system, generally, there are examples in the election.
Now, if this actually split up, the relationship at the beginning. I, A, it was more self. And then beginning to two, it's quite common. Tell me that so that we can see what we're doing in a relationship. What will our relationship be? This is how. I look, I often started by this way. The freeway, so a freeway can have three lanes.
Can we share cars?
We're just going to jump into your first.
It's like the, the, you know, the legislative branch, executive branch. Wow.
Check them down to ourselves.
Well, yeah, you hire people.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I just brought up the need, we just have to have trust. Trust family, hire the right person. Let them do it and then let them do their job. So we, may I just, we had board communications with the public and board communications with staff. And basically, the first thing involved with those pieces is chain of plan. So whether it's a staff member, it's any EHC. First, the first thing that a staff member or a member of the public needs to do is communicate. Of the general plan, if it's a school level concern, if it's a school, if it's a transportation or a department, or a local department. And all those should get exhausted before something comes to the board or gets to us. And then there are processes in place, so someone wants to address a board, put a board. And they can come to call the public, they can address us in writing. But at the end of the day, anything. Right, nothing but anonymous. And we had an anonymous tip or anonymous phone call, which I got last week, or anonymous email. No signature way to identify that bullshit. That can't, that's not something that's credible for us to take action. And finally, that in both of those cases, the official communication about whatever it is that we're doing comes from the superintendent and we're designated to the public or to our employees, not from us. We're, we're, we only have power for it. And I'm not on my own, I'm a member of the government board, but I don't speak for the government as a unit. We talked about transparency as well, it's not anything, but that transparency is a two-way street. And that people expect it from us, but we should expect it from each other. It's very good to know why you have a consideration of awareness. That takes me back to what you said about acting about what we hear about or what we know about this district versus
Do you want to?
So.
Go with BBAA or DCA?
We didn't have a lot of stuff.
What do we should do, is it the same thing?
Yeah, basically, it's the same policy, but one is directed toward staff members and one is directed toward the public. It's very similar. Very similar setup.
I felt superintendent had a really big challenge with staff members communicating directly with the board. And violating this policy because she refused to quit. Going to the board, put up before she went through her first vote. Pretty clear, but we also have staff ethics and staff conduct, you know, that also lays out, here's how you go about presenting a concern or whatever. We, we, I people are really good at what's your background. Never change. Doing the gates, our building leadership, that creates an environment where people feel like they're heard in, like they can express themselves. There also goes on the board, not a point of having to refuse to that. There are some boards where they kind of see that. I feel very fortunate in this area that board leaders partially agree with the question. And again, I think building principles have a lot to do with it.
Yeah. I, I felt that. Wait. But she doesn't. She has something. But.
All her struggles are right, yeah.
Yeah.
That kid sex closed their pocket for three weeks.
Yeah. Cases, I give whole parts of resulting policy. And I remember this department chair who would then go back to the, his building and say, this is what happened in the meeting and I'm against it and they don't know what you're talking about, instead of saying, I'm a leader.
Yeah.
And this is what we decided at the beginning, even if we did approve it, saying this is what we decided. So we did poison.
I summarize that whole bottom section of the page about relationships and that's what you tell us to think about. For this evening, about relationships. The data information that we're literally getting through work seamlessly with to vote and act with impartiality, to accept the majority. Responsibility to the confidential, represent the public, and report complaints, you know, that's all about relationships. Relationships that you have in your district and each other.
Since you guys are just about wrapping up or?
We're just. Yeah, one more.
Okay, do it.
We have a third quarter on DCA, there's so much good. A lot of the ones that we we did on, I think we're good, was C. It sounds to be good, the facts, to have independent judgment, go surrender that judgment, that ability to make good decisions.
Yeah.
You know, that's one of the things, I was chairing with him, I tried to, I don't do it purposely, I provide editorial every once in a while, my financial report. But I, I try to just present facts and I
Trying to say, no, I, I don't know why I thought happiness is so exciting. Is it Rapid City, is it?
SD. I sent you a text for the name.
Yeah, yeah, but I thought something, I thought something about.
Oh, you are.
I'm telling you, so you can get into the hotel.
Yeah.
Instead of end up like for science.
About every three. Where the Dallas, he was saying, yeah, Dallas, that's where that's where Matt Leach was quite nice to say.
Yeah. If you have that, you can't figure yourselves.
I have a question about the word.
Great, thank you, thank you. So if we could kind of report out to the whole room and reference the policy that we're talking about, and I would love to hear from the board members, not the executives. So board policy, BBA, board powers and responsibilities, Teresa and Oradell, what do you take away from this section?
Well, the very first part, Duane actually had divided up, I thought, very well, A, B, and C. So the top half are the functions and then the bottom half are the relationships that are needed to carry out the duties and obligations of board members, but when I first read the top, obviously, I read legislative, executive, judicial is going to be the most function in my mind. But it was the appraisal, which really does still relate to the judicial function. I also, I thought it was a good reminder, it was a good reminder for me because I really never think about us being the general agent of the state of Arizona as a board member. I mean, I know that we're a government agency, but I just don't generally use that language. In carrying out the will of the people of this district, of those in district law of education, so that was a good reminder for me.
Just, just for the executive function, just to remember that we have trust in, that we delegate to. That we trust the people we hired to do the job and then when we delegate it, then it's, then they do their job. And we have to trust that that's, that that's what's taking place.
If that wasn't your policy, I would encourage you when you go home for the next while to take a look at those yourself, board members who haven't seen. Policy, BBAA, board member authority and responsibilities.
Yeah, so we looked at this one and Dennis and I agree, you know, we always think about the board meeting together here, right, the boardroom. But there can be a core, you know, whether you're on an email or other technological devices, so that's something to keep in mind, to make sure they're going to break open meeting. And the other thing is that individual board members exercise authority over the district affairs only by way of votes taken at the legal meeting of the boards. The boards have the power collectively. The individual board member has authority only when, to the extent that the board by board has still delegated such authority. So, yeah, so that's BBAA.
And then how about, I think the next one is ethics. Board member ethics, Keith, you know some of that?
DCA.
One of them, DCA.
Yep, I think. Decisions that we make. I think we're putting up ourselves professionally. It's good reminder to read the C, facts and the government. Try to do that, of course, they should be different. Pre expression, meaning all board members. I think if we can maybe do better. I really do, I, I I think if, I think if the board members can engage a little more, I've talked to you about it, you know, instead of getting a motion. A board member actually making a motion for it as long as we, it engages the board member. And the more you speak in that environment, the, you get a little more comfortable. And you have a tendency to ask questions when you have those discussions. So I, I think that it's good that the board member, that you don't just ask for a motion. They actually repeat it, get that conversation. So I, you know, expression of opinion about board members. We express the important stuff, but I think the only thing I agree here, kind of question, systematic communication with the board, students, staff. I think the staff and community the board is pretty easy, students are one that we stumbled over a little bit. And the only thing I can do to complete is the Washington High School students. They have student council that comes and speaks to students, they have a different age group that are engaging with the board and so they get that interaction. So we, we get the other side of that, we get surveys that come back to us, so that's the student's voice coming back to us now more than surveys and other we are getting the voice, it's just not based on us. So, so that kind of, that would have helped. Relaxing cave, remember always that a board member's first greatest concern must be the district's involvement of the public's students and the public's needs. Should be able to pop in there. But I think everybody's got that. Certainly, I worry. But that's what we came up with.
We had VHC. We had VHC and VHD, which very much mirror, um, each other. VHC is board communications with staff members. And, um, you can see that it says official communication between the board and employee will occur as follows, and then they lay out, or the policy lays out. That an employee will first communicate at the school level, so, uh, Luciano said that what strikes him is this means like chain of command. So before someone intrigues a board member to take action or to see their point of view, really, they need to go back, what happened when you talked to your supervisor, what happened when you talked to your principal? And, and the same goes for the public, what happens if your problems with transportation, coming to me is not going to solve the problem, but I can refer you back to transportation director, and then they can help you solve that. So really that there's a chain of command with communications, and that we need to encourage that as well. That doesn't exempt us or take us out of, take us out of it entirely, but if we follow those processes, that we'll have better communication. And that, but people still always have the option to bring us their concerns, but there's a format for that, it's called the public, or it is addressed the board in writing. Um, in both, both pieces, it says no anonymous communication will be considered by the board. And we have mentioned, uh, more than once at board meetings and in, uh, conversations with, with each other, that transparency is important. And when you have someone who's appealing to us, appealing to you anonymously, whether it's a phone call or email, or stops you on the street, um, and doesn't want to identify themselves or give identifying information, that, that's not something we should consider. If, if they want us to consider their, um, serious concerns, then they need to seriously identify themselves. And so, uh, those need to go by the wayside, and, and then we also need to say to each other, um, Luciano asked me to look into this because he has a concern versus I heard that this is an issue. And so if we can give those kinds of context to each other, now, sometimes people, um, they're private, and they don't want a private conversation to become a public conversation. But we need to find a way to give context to those situations where, um, somebody wants to know something, but they're afraid to come forward, then we need to find them a, a place where they can feel comfortable in communicating to us or their supervisors. But that, that piece, the anonymous communication, that was, um, important. Also, um, if there are a few official communications that go out, directives, policies, concerns that we have, actions that we take, they'll be communicated by the superintendent, not by us. So we don't go and stand on the street corner and say, let me tell you what happened at the board meeting and what the new COVID policy is. The superintendent or his designees send out a communication, uh, news releases, phone calls, um, letters and so on. But that comes from the district superintendent's office and his designees versus us, we don't send a press release as a board, that would come from the district office. Dennis. Good. Well, what was interesting as I, we were listening to the other conversation, that communication is in all of these other policies, like I'm looking at ethics, communication to other board members and the superintendent. And then also the communication of standing behind a, a decision that the board makes, not communicating, uh, communicating support for those decisions, even when we don't 100% agree. So that communication comes through all of it, so I thought that was interesting too, that we have policies that are separate, but that communication is a thread that comes along. And I think that's something that, uh, board members have shared with each other and with, um, the public when we're addressed. Anybody else want to have any last words or anything that strikes, Mr. Shalva?
One thing, I don't remember exactly what the policy was, but I think it's in more than one, that talked about how, um, the board's interactions, especially with the public, should be to promote and to garner interest in and support for the school district. I think that's, that's an important thing, uh, to be an educator, but I think to be as the, the leader of the school district, is that everybody's on the same page of promoting our district. It doesn't mean we don't have problems, anytime you get two or more people together, it's not just one. But we need, we need to, uh, we need to communicate, we need to present ourselves, uh, in my opinion, and I think for now, in a way that's going to garner support from the public and for the.
Right. Thank you for sharing that. So, uh, in a moment, we're going to take a, a short break, and then we'll come back and really talk about the meat and potatoes of the goals that we have that we, we need to set soon, because we're going to be asking our superintendent to demonstrate progress to that for his evaluation, which should happen at least initially by December or in December. And it would be good for the district to know where we want them to go, since schools already started. It's like we're building the plane in the air. I'm going to be putting up with a few, uh, the terms that we kept hearing about in our conversations thus far up here, and then feel free, before you leave, to grab a marker or a sticky and add. A goal that I have, and, and perhaps we can continue to think about it at the law conference in our next, um, our next goal setting session, and Mr. Shalva alluded to it in the welcome, is to have not policy, but a handbook, like, here's how we operate. What we, and I called it a long time ago, it's like a social contract, here's how we'll treat each other. It should go without saying, but sometimes you need to say it anyway, like, this is how we treat each other, I really feel like we have, um, good relationships among us, but it would be nice to delineate those and lay them out and say, here's, you know what? If you're looking at our board, here's what you can expect of us, this is what we expect of each other. So I'd like to maybe think about something we put on our website or something, a handbook that we hand out to a new member, or something that says, here's who we are, what we believe and what we're about, and here's, it's not a policy, but it's, it's who we are and who we aspire to be even. All right, with that, let us have a 10-minute break, we could make it eight, we'll be back in time.
Okay, we want to take a little trip down memory lane, we further down memory lane than any of our board members have actually. So going back to 2016, uh, let me, let me preface this by, here, or you can say this in one form or another, but I think it was Michael Spoker who said, uh, when it comes to setting goals for your school district, if you have more than three, you probably don't have any. Because if you get too many goals going, it's hard to keep them all moving in the same direction, so you'll see that most years we have three, one year we had four. But I just want to go through, kind of, since 2016, um, take a look at the goals that the board has set, and, uh, we put on the left-hand column, so there's, like, categories. Can you see that? So in 2016, when I was hired, um, we were a declining enrollment district by a pretty good measure. We had lost 3,000 students in the previous five or six years. Um, so the, the focus was really on how can we promote our district and how can we, uh, tell our story up there, you know, to, to encourage people to come and enroll in our school district. So you see, the first goal was about customer service, uh, the second goal was about internal, external community engagement, we talked a lot about at our schools, having our principals talk about telling their story in their elevator speech, and somebody asks you about your school, what is it? You tell them, you know, a 20-second lesson, things like that. Um, and then there was a, uh, course of teaching and learning about support for every student, uh, by many deep, uh, and deeply rigorous enrollment instruction. So each of these three, so there was your customer service goal, community engagement goal, and this student support goal. And then each had a couple, uh, bullets underneath. The next year, um, the board chose to keep the same main goals, um, topically, customer service, community engagement, and student support, but they added, uh, a couple of descriptors underneath. Specifically, I believe, two, three, um, around, uh, I believe that what we added was professional development, collaborative structures. Here at the board meeting yesterday, and we saw Michelle Udall's presentation, she, that presentation with the gears was, uh, basically that, the classic professional order community model. So that, that's something that we emphasized in 2017, 2018. 2018, 2019, we changed it up a little bit, we had a student achievement goal, but the student achievement goal was more of a process goal about what the teachers, we enhanced, uh, quality of destruction, district-wide, to continue professional development. We worked on the, uh, for, for elements of, uh, personalized learning, personalized instruction, uh, the second one was around leadership. We had, uh, that year we had quite a few new building administrators, so, uh, we made a goal around, uh, in developing that leadership capacity with our, our new folks. In fact, that our, at our, um, admin advanced that year, we actually had like a half day prior to it with all the new people. Take that back and look at, not this year, but last year, we didn't have any new people. Okay, so we had a goal around, uh, developing leadership, and then, uh, a goal around culture, and it improved upon successful efforts to, uh, to engage our community, provide outstanding service for our customers. So what that culture goal really was, was kind of combining the first two goals from the previous years around, uh, community, around, uh, customer service and communication. 1920, we entered a fourth goal, so this is coming off of the, uh, governor's 20 by 20, um, plan, you remember? The, um, the increasing teacher salaries by 20% by 2020. There was some criticism out there, I, I guess I'm going up from the bottom, there was some criticism out there that teach, that school districts weren't, um, weren't taking that idea of putting it first in teacher salaries, that teacher salaries in a lot of districts weren't going up by 20%. So we made it a goal to state this, that, you know, um, we're going to reuse, uh, taxpayer revenue effectively, fairly, and the fact is, our teacher salaries went up significantly more than 20% in 2020, uh, time period. So they, that was just a, a stated goal by the board, look, this is what we're going to do, we're going to use the funds appropriately. Uh, we had a whole child education and, uh, and support, uh, to have it, right there, it said social emotional learning, that was not a political topic back then, that was just teaching kids to get along in the social environment and regulate their emotions while they're at school. The second one is building capacity, continued to build capacity with all employee groups, and that was, uh, that was, we had a board member especially who was very interested in making sure that we are, continue to provide, uh, professional development opportunities for our classified staff in addition to our, to our teaching and administrative staff. So that, that was kind of the thrust behind that one. And then continue to enhance community engagement, um, community engagement, parent communication, things like that. Next year was COVID. So, I don't know, upset. That was all about returning, returning the inverse of learning, right, and having a plan to, to keep our kids safe and healthy, and try to keep them informed, um, at, at the same time. Then 21, 22, as you can see, again, we, um, we adopted our whole child framework, which is, we've been, uh, really using and digging into, um, with our, with our principals and with our teachers, it's totally resonating, uh, at our, at our buildings, that idea that every kid needs to be healthy, safe, challenging, engaged, and supportive. Strengthening collaboration, adult learning, job embedded adult learning is the secret sauce for running a successful education organization. That's how the kids benefit, that the adults learn together, that they learn for the kids, about the kids, and with the kids, than the kids who don't. And finally, strengthen the engagement, again, strengthening opportunities for engagement, and at that time, we talked about not just engagement with the community, but also opportunities for kids to be engaged, uh, in, in school. And over the last several years, we've done lots of stuff, in fact, we talked about doing a board presentation about all different ways we engage kids. Now, we didn't do several years ago, when it was intermodal sports, uh, redoing elementary band, uh, different opportunities for kids to do things, current school, after school, for school. So, and then this, this year, uh, there was, so that's kind of where we've been. I guess what I would like to do is, thinking in terms of the big picture, um, supporting the whole child, strengthening collaboration, those are the big picture, those are the big topics. I would like to hear the board's ideas about what kind of goals, uh, we should be setting for our district. I know last year, there was some talk around, um, more measurable goals, I mean, a lot of our goals in the past have been as process goals, and we're going to, we're going to implement this, we're going to promote this, we're going to provide professional development in this area, we're going to increase, or we're going to strengthen these processes. The idea being that the measurability piece would be the outcome of that process. The other way to look at it is to put in a measurable goal, and have the underlying pieces, the, the action steps that, uh, that we think will lead to the achievement of that. Dennis and I have been spending a lot of time working on and talking about our facilities. We have 60 buildings that are more than 50 years old in our school district. Uh, we, you know, we work with our candidates, targeting some good information. But I think it should be reasonable to have something around our physical plants, our physical buildings as a category for a goal. I think it's always good to strengthen teaching practices, I think it's always good to, um, strengthen engagement with parents, with our staff, communities. What I would like to hear the board's ideas on that, categorize your ideas, areas of goals.
Student achievement.
That's what I was just thinking exactly, absolutely. And that's measurable, quantifiable.
Dwayne, you want to share the, uh? So Dr. Corvola, big, very unatious goal that we can put out to our principals, is that the, that the event? To achieve of our.
I don't remember what.
10%.
Oh, yeah, oh, just our regular, our, our goal, yes. So our, our goal in our district this year, uh, is to increase student achievement by 10%, uh, based on our Galileo interim assessment, and it doesn't matter what, uh, what demographic you belong to. So, and not kids belong to more than one demographic, you might happen ethnicity, you might belong to free or reduced lunch, or an ethnicity, and you might be a second language learner, or you might be all free, but it doesn't matter, all students, you might be ungifted kids. Sorry, and ungifted kids need to improve their, your achievement as well. And so by looking, um, by thinking about 10%, uh, it's, it, uh, we think it's achievable, it also moves a lot of our kids who are right at the cusp of moving from partially proficient to proficiency on, on the AASAR state test. Um, we would, we would, we would bring over actually literally hundreds of students by just raising that score that much. Yeah. And so, now, that's also keeping in mind, don't lose anybody, uh, who's already in your proficiency range too, so, but, you know, those, those kids just escalate, you know, because of 100%. Anyway, that is a goal.
That's kind of the goal, but why 10%? Is there a specific reason why that?
Yeah, because 10% would move, would move these kids over. So I asked, yes, so I asked about, well, at first I did, I said, I asked Chris Adver, who's our assessment director, I said, what would 10% do? And he said, wow, 10% would actually move, uh, it'd take two, three, uh, two, three, four, whatever questions, and it'd move all these guys over. Not all, not, not 100%, but, but a good majority. Not all, not 100%, but a good majority of them would move over. And then, so, and there's other categories too, from the very bottom to minimally proficient to partially proficient. Not for our proficient kids who move to highly proficient, we have them all over. We have a whole gamut of kids performing directly.
And 10% isn't huge.
It is.
Yeah, that's 10%. So. It's not ambitious, it's huge. Very ambitious. So what was the movement last year? Did we have an increase?
It's a moderate increase.
In ELA, we increased, yeah. So ELA, that was a plus build. Not, it just kind of just stayed there.
That's a struggle.
Yeah.
So if the goal is 10%, I'm just wondering how that compares to what it was last year overall? Do you happen to know, can, or no, that's okay if you don't?
No, I don't.
Okay, no problem.
And so anything beyond three statistically significant, is that correct?
Yeah.
So thinking.
So let's not interrupt, let's not try to draft a goal.
Right.
So I think we've decided we want a student, we want a measurable student achievable. Two, four, one.
Yeah, it's why we want the. And the only reason I was asking is because 10, I said it's huge, but we shoot for 10. And if you get five, that's still huge. And you pursue that 10, you can still accomplish great things.
Yes, but just a school year.
But looking at 10%, I mean, we already wanted to implement those measures. They do?
That's right.
Oh, we are.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we did that in that one.
We talked about the goal, I mean, in July.
Didn't mean to jump the gun.
Might have to start somewhere.
So is the board in agreement, or is it something we can maybe try to draft next time around securing revenue for school building maintenance and upgrades? Absolutely, you gotta have good buildings. Absolutely, yeah.
Resources and revenue.
And the other areas, you know, those structures among our faculty and staff, those capacity building goals. We had some of the soft goals around kids, around supporting kids. Communication, community engagement, things like that. Those are things that we've done in the past. There's nothing saying that those are categories that need to be repeated for this year, but just kind of give you an idea of where we've been.
What do our parents or what does our community say about what, where they think our district needs help or focus? Or, I mean, I remember seeing the results, there was no, there was no high level of dissatisfaction in any of your category, but was there anything that came back to us in survey form that said, hey, maybe this is something that needs work?
In fact, there was.
Okay, what's that?
Well, I actually, I changed it. But I put in the Friday report a few weeks ago, because I put that article about national surveys, about the disconnect between what politicians and the media think about public schools, say about public schools, and what parents say about public schools. And remember, I put the results from our parent survey in there. So I asked Lucy, I don't know if she makes the slides, but he does a great job of making the slides. So, you know, we had our parent survey this last year, and you can see that we had more responses. So we had, you know, over 22, almost 2300 responses, which is a very good response rate for a survey that you just send out and people sent back. And it was better than, the rate was better than the year before. And you can see the blue line there, so let me try to read. The categories and questions that were asked. And it was a favorability like a scale. School staff, school safety, high school and college readiness, student engagement, valuing student opinion, quality education, use of technology, high expectations for achievement, positive impact of the school, and parent access to student progress, which I would call transparency with the parents. And then finding overall the district score. You can see the blue was last year, and the red was this past year. So the red was most recent year. You can see that our parents are pretty happy with us. And if you think about the fact that that's been a goal, that's been a pretty specific board goal, engaging our parents and engaging our community over the last several years. And the things we've put in place to do that, I think have resulted in really strong responses from our parents. So I, especially that parent access to student progress with 95% favorability rate, that's pretty good. Our highest one rated our people, 95.2%, that's the people at my kid's school. That's what I think about. I think they're all great people. They're good professionals and caring, caring and.
I don't think we should take our foot off the gas on that one then. If, if what you pay attention to is what gets done, and that's what's been happening, then community and parent engagement, communication, or however that gets worded.
Yeah, I was thinking both parent and community. Which is the engagement?
Who's the lowest one?
The lowest one that's here, maybe one student was. High school, college ready and valuing student opinion.
You know, we've been doing, we've been talking our kids about what they think about their school. And so I think that that would be interesting information to put out to our parents because if it's, I mean, it's overwhelmingly positive, they're really, they're really love our thing of school. So I think that that should, that we do as a district value and care about student achievement. I think it's one thing that sets us apart. I don't think we always, I'm not sure, in education, you know, we always, you know, we're told what we can teach and from the state, and that's what we do. And I think it's also important that we make this to our students, and have that balance and make sure that they're okay. But that, you know, that's something probably a lot of our parents know about. It's something we've talked about with the.
And in this day and age when you have so much school choice too, it's just really important to have that constant communication and engagement. Definitely branding our schools and showing, showcasing also. So we have parents that we have, or I think that all these last couple of years, we got a lot of that. I don't know, it's here with the board goals, as they talk with some of the students that were here too. So that's crucial in this one, just so our school choice to take that round.
You know, parents also, they love what happens at our schools. They love the extracurriculars, but obviously they love the teachers and what they're doing for their kids. But I don't think maybe that their understanding is, we do all this so as we prepare our kids also for college and career. And I know that, I know that our next level for our kids is high school. But, and I don't think parents are thinking about that yet. And I think that's where we possibly have some room to keep our communication going. To talk about, hey, this is, these are the, these are the, these are the initial steps that we do in the elementary years to get your kids ready for high school, college, and career. And so there's some, there's some really, some really good things. And that's why we bring Apple to the district. That is the active goal. That is the active mission. And that's, and that's the system that we use in our district.
I'll say I'll start communication efforts and engagement efforts towards parents and also help this work improvement of staff. This has been one of our best years when it comes to hiring teachers. And a lot of feedback we're getting from those new employees, when teachers are, we heard about great things happening in your schools. We want to work with your students, so we're able to collect your school. So doing this and focusing on this, also having some positive consequences will be a point as well. And the summer increase also will be up. Yeah, that did hurt. That's another, that's another element is, you know, we're attracting the candy. For this year, we're able to attract a lot more highly qualified people. We had about the same number of teachers we had hired, in just one different way. So this year, we've been able to attract a cohort that's more highly qualified and certified than last year's cohort. But we still lost about the same number of teachers. Now, we're, we're a whole community with kids, we're a whole community of teachers too. We have, I don't know, I have teachers who are military connected, and they're each a great teacher. And we know they're only gonna stay a couple of years. And we have, you know, statistically, a lot of people leave the, leave the profession within the first few years for whatever reason, whether they want more money or whatever things. We're just doing it for something to do till they figure out what they really want to do.
Till they grow up.
Whatever the situation is, there's a lot of reasons. That's why we, we're looking on this, I don't know, kind of concept to try to maybe flip the script on worrying why people leave instead of why they stay. So I think, yeah, if we can have the categories kind of in mind tonight, then that'll make it a lot probably quicker process in the next week to actually draft them. You can get into the weeds when you start looking.
Student achievement, resources and revenue, community, parent engagement. And when we talk about, you know, collaborative structures, when teachers do that, when our staff does that, that increases student achievement. So there, there's room for all the action steps everyone's already taking. They fit even as well as pieces.
When there's one, infrastructure plays a large role in the retention and the learning. How creative is the environment for kids to be able to do those things and learn. They're all connected really well together too.
Okay, I think that's good.
On these, do you have descriptors for the parents of this? Because I imagine it's a bubble, you know, one to five, five to one.
Four, yeah, yeah, one to four.
And then you have a descriptor underneath each of this.
It's a statement.
No, it's just a statement. So how's the one for the value student opinion? Because that raises kids in fact. Factor into the situation, but.
That's true, that's true as well.
If you're such a high score, but then you get this value student opinion down at 86, it just, they don't.
Their kids probably come home and complain sometimes that the teacher just doesn't, doesn't listen to them.
I think sometimes too, parents aren't sure how much kids have been, I mean, they're not there every day like their kids are, right? They're not sure really how much their child's opinion is valued at school. So they just keep them.
Still pretty high though.
Yeah, 99.2 is still a name right now.
Or an A, and none of your ratings.
That's the same as blocking the law. It's always great to appreciate how the teacher, obviously, part of it is the relationship.
Yeah, on the bank with the academics involved with it.
Yeah, I like Bella's math teacher, but Bella doesn't like Bella's math teacher.
Well, I mean, when I was in school, I thought like, maybe the teacher's so. Definitely wasn't packed up. So I just kind of take that back and make the equation. Parents today value the teachers on the relationship or.
Yes.
A relationship is good. You can't have a relationship and not care about someone's.
So amabety of you. That's very amabety of you.
Okay, so the next thing we want to talk about, I think we have those down, right? Is board self-evaluation. Going back to, not just as long as I've been here, but with my transition meeting with Darwin, when he was the biggest superintendent, going back to all the time that he was superintendent. The board was not real fond of the idea of like having a formal evaluation process for itself. For the wireline. But I know, I do know that through some of the conversations, we've had Keith and Faith and Amanda, and things like that. There's been some interest in at least putting forth some kind of a process where the board determines what they're, what's going well and what could be improved and, and how to go about making that prudent. I think one thing that past boards didn't like was the instrument that's in the policy. Now, you don't have to use the instrument that's in the policy. It's in this folder, DAA exhibit. But it's, you know, it's pretty dry. So one thing that's in the actual policy is a list, not an exhaustive list, but a list of areas and procedures that the board may decide to use to evaluate themselves. So I don't know exactly how to go about this part of the process, but I think if, if, this is, this is a good opportunity, I think, first local discussion among board members, just take a minute, kind of look down these suggested topics. You know, maybe this board, maybe you do want to use a formal appraisal instrument and, and go through this and, you know, go through this process and meet and do your self-evaluation. Or maybe you want to, you can pick and choose or focus on one or two areas in the course of a year.
The good thing about having a law conference next week is we're gonna be meeting with so many colleagues that make a friend at Patagonia School District, and they have a great board evaluation process for instrument. And then they email it to you if you've got some more.
I think what you'll find when you have those conversations with other board members from other districts is they really don't like a formal standardized tool. This is the one that they say have adopted, it's in everybody's policy manual, but it's pretty, it's pretty exhausting.
But it does give you points for looking at it.
Yeah.
I mean, the other side, you don't want one that you can get checked on the rest of the way down. Almost something, I like strengths and weaknesses. And where, where does the board members find our strengths, where do we find our weaknesses? I think it's valuable.
They like the term strengths in all places.
Plus it's a delta.
Opportunities are growth.
Opportunities are growth.
There are some good categories here.
Yes.
And in this document, in the policy, that, and everything in the policy says may. We may have, we may self-evaluate by then, we may use these approaches, we may use these criteria. So the cool thing is we get to identify for ourselves, and we should do it again soon, in the coming months, so that we have a target to shoot for, because it would be foolish to, you know, rate ourselves in a category we didn't even start working on until December. First of all, do we feel like it's a valuable, a valuable process? Should we be doing this?
Sure.
Yes, yeah. I mean, since Keith sat in that chair, but there are every, almost every board may be looking at each other and say, how did we do tonight? Like, how did it go? How did we do? That's a very informal way to do it, but. That's just the two of us, so we need to have something more.
I mean, is there like a central way?
Nothing to do with.
You don't use Google. It'll scare you away. I've seen some, they're. Books of the value.
Oh, yeah.
But I, I like this.
Strength and opportunities.
ASDA's, they help you to process what you would know. And you type it in and then they make charts and graphs and task them. It's very exhaustive, that's not what I'm going to do either.
So I'm just gonna look next week, like you said, when we got a law conference, I'm gonna speak to various people and I've asked my friends in the board, just I'm sure all of us do around state. We asked them. And we'll test together and see if there's things that we like to come up with. But what's the purpose of evaluation? For two, for two, for two, and if you want to improve, if you could improve incrementally. So one year to the next, you're getting.
Those, those three holes can be, maybe this is.
There are holes.
So here, right? So how will we as a board.
Impact.
To that, and maybe that's the first step, take something simple. Next year we can look at it and say. That was overly easy. Let's add some more shit, we have these other ones, we can, I think in there, we might have something done by October thirty. Which doesn't give us a whole lot of time, I don't know about everybody else's calendar, but mine must go by a few factors.
I started looking at November. Idea, I actually do a line. Do a line, some, to start, just start with something, right?
Right.
And it's aligned with other goals and then they have the district, then. Use that and make it more of a process this year. And they may put a little more meat on that bone next year.
Trial and error so we don't overwhelm ourselves, so we can start seeking that topic. How has the board contributed to those?
Yeah, cause we take not too big a task, you know, we've done this, we've just waited for it to develop by the rest.
I don't think we want to drive around the goal to inspect the. The district, so. Are we giving the resources for the services?
And then it gives us an opportunity to say, well, what can we do to support that? How can we engage with our community and our parents? To ensure that we get the right resources and revenue to improve our buildings.
That's a good idea, Keith.
Get right on that.
Great idea. Okay, the last thing, we're gonna be right on time here. The other thing that the boards have really never liked doing is the formal evaluation tool for evaluating superintendent. The most common. Comment that I've gotten from board presidents over the years is, in order to do this, it's like they're gonna have to follow you around every day. And. You know, and in order to have, in order to have the information that we need to. To really answer these questions and evaluate all these different descriptors.
Mr. Shalhoub, before we look at that tool, can we look at policy DVD?
Yes. Being DVD.
Thank you to the tabs.
Yes, ma'am.
Establishment of policies is a responsibility of the board and the execution of our policies is a function of the superintendent. The superintendent is the chief executive officer of the school district and is responsible for the professional leadership. And still necessary to translate the policies of the board into action. Superintendent is responsible for the administration of the district. The superintendent may delegate necessary authority to other employees and develop such procedures and regulations. As superintendent considers necessary to ensure efficient operation of the district. So if we say that to reset policy and can carry it out. Then along the same lines as Keith pointed out, if our district are governing board goals. Should we go down the road and say, well, achieving these. District goals is a function of your position and we hold you to that. But we need to have some specific descriptors because those are the big airy.
General.
Yeah, they're very general, they.
Right, so what's, what's in my contract? Which I air this is, uh, is that. You know, each year superintendent shall. Present to the board progress made toward board goals that year. And it's supposed to be done in December. And then. My understanding is legally, if there's a formal. If there's a formal instrument used, then that becomes a formal document that then is a matter of public record. And I know that. Past boards have not been really thrilled about that idea of having a, basically get somebody to. Do a FOIA request on and make that kind of a. Inquiry. So what we've done in the past is, and. Is we, I've given a presentation about progress toward goals. We've done it at an executive session, but I'm really in conversation with Teresa after our last one. And she's like, you know, this really. Should be an open meeting, I mean, you know, you're, you're presenting about progress that the district's making and. That could be in an open meeting or it could be in a, a meeting like this that's, that's noted, noticed and open to the public. And then, so then what's happened is the board has declared. A timeline around December that they reviewed. Progress toward goals of superintendent and that they found the performance to be satisfactory. That way it's. It's, it's less formal, it's less formalized. But the bottom line is the superintendent served at the pleasure of the board. So. Whether, whether the board decides to use a formal instrument, whether the board decides to use officially done or a hybrid of the two maybe. Cause there, there's a whole section in this interim about progress toward goals too, I mean, it's, it's a monster. It's huge. So whatever the board decides and. Is, is gonna be final meeting. But. Just kind of using history.
Mr. Shalhoub, your experience with other. Human resource directors and with school districts, are there things that you have heard or have seen work well or seen work missing?
I've talked to a lot of board members, I've talked to a lot of director directors that have set ups and I would say that this is the most common structure where it's a verbal conversation. Beautiful conversation between the board members and the superintendent. Very great to have actual documentation set in their personal file, even when we talk to our legal counsel, that was their guidance as well.
But what we did, like for example, what we did last December, that gets documented, right? I mean, it was executive session. It's documented, it's.
The presentation we made toward. Like before you see a report on progress toward goals.
Producing an actual evaluation is what's rare. For most districts.
And I also think it's difficult because who's gonna actually, it's all five of us doing this very detailed, it's gonna vary differently. How, it's gonna take forever to probably come together. And I know we all think it's. It could theoretically take forever to come together, make a decision on what do we think. Exceeds me.
Well, it's, it's worse, it's a one, two, three, four. So you can end up, you know, like conversations about between threes and fours in years of. Yeah, how can you rate a four if a member following around this secret?
Right, and that, and I think that's. That's the feedback I've received from board members over the years is. The board didn't feel like they could accurately and in any kind of consistent way. Fill out a mission like this that gets any kind of. That gets near the feedback to the superintendent that a good conversation can have about, here's what we said we wanted to. Work toward or accomplish this year, show us evidence of how that went and let's have this conversation right now. And then we can adjust our goals next year, we can say, okay, you need to work on this, or the district needs to work on this. You know, this area. More formative, I guess, is, I guess the best way to put it.
What would you like feedback on? What do you, what, what is that, what, what do you want to know about how you're doing? What he wants to tell you, not the results, but what do you want to know about?
I just want, I just want this to be on the table for the board. Um, I think board struggle with evaluations superintendent, I think that's probably a universal challenge for boards. Um, I don't want to. Give the impression that I. That I'm not in favor, that I don't want feedback, that I don't want to be, you know, I'm more than happy to receive feedback and suggestions and try to improve. Not like my own practice, but improve the performance of the district. You know, in any way that I can, so. I personally like the idea of the conversation, as long as everybody is, you know, open and.
What's the current eval relation?
Presentation of progress toward goals, though I can have presentation of the progress that we've made. Whether it's procedural or, like this year, we have a quantitative goal, we're not gonna have that in December, that's gonna come out at the end of the year. But that's, that's really kind of secondary is. Evidence that the direction the board set at the beginning of the year in the terms of the, of the. Goals that the board set, evidence that we're making progress or that we. Have made or made significant progress toward those goals.
So in this space, it would be the infrastructure, student achievement, and then the parent community engagement.
Right.
Showing your progress.
I wanna say but, and. But if there, I guess what I want to know, is there something that you would like specifically back on? Or are there other, in addition to the school goals, are there things that we hold in courses that we want to say, okay, in addition to this progress, school goals, Jamie, we also want you to. Tell us how many pushups you can do in three seconds, I don't know, that's ridiculous, but are there other things?
That's a low number.
Are there other things? Are there, are there other categories that you won't be desired feedback on from us? I don't know what those are because you've never done your job. So I, I just, I wanted to be open to you as well saying, you know what, tell me about how you think I X, Y, Z, how I execute this function of my position.
Okay, let me think about, think about that.
One year, two more, so one year before Mr. Shalhoub, the board just uses as a template, they didn't fill out the actual form. But they said, okay, we're gonna talk about these three categories. And they gave board members opportunities to reflect before that meeting and they came with their thoughts, everybody. So these are my general thoughts about how you navigate or lead in education, these are my general thoughts of category between the board and relations. So that was one year, and so they moved out all the different details, but they came with some, some notes about essentially each category and that was pretty helpful. So that's another option too.
And part of establishing that, the relationship to the board and CEO, superintendent is, the board doesn't. Does not drive the howl. They set the policy and allow this, you know, to establish the howl. And then the end product is a bottom. So you, you don't have to follow through the day in and day out activities, you can look at the product and say, well. However it was done.
You got us there.
We don't have the products and we're family, we don't have investigations on how the street is run. We're not, and we'll. I mean, that was an easy one, but that is, that's my understanding of the overarching of how we evaluate the board. We establish the policy, the superintendent sets those.
And a, and a complicating factor. Is that we're not producing widgets.
Right.
Where we get a new group of little human beings that commit every year. Some are new and some are different, some are the same, they don't look the same though. You know, they're not the same, but we've got another four hundred employees. So. That, that's what makes, I think, out of the quantitative or the specific descriptive, specifically descriptive. Instrument even more complicated because you can't just say, well, you know, our production was up this year, so. Here's your bonus, or our production was down this year, so we're gonna go, it's, it's, it's just much more complex. Industry.
So something I'd like to add that's important to me is communication. Communication happens.
I have to be honest, sometimes I wonder if anybody reads.
I hate what you quizzed me on, did you see that picture? No, I didn't open the picture. I didn't.
I read, I read, I don't get this really well.
I thought at some point I'd go sit here and go, I didn't get a signal. Nobody even finished the thing, so I could, that's when you think about that thing or whatever. And I thought. They get really mad if I go to movies.
You'd be surprised at which ones come back. That's a reason.
Well, that's a great instrument for me too, because. I get information from all the different departments that is good information, but see, I don't get information. You get information on things that are, that are going on, that helps me kind of synthesize it in each week. You know, here's what's, here's what's going on in the districts. Really good, good activity for me as well.
So we have things to think about as far as our evaluation, your evaluation, we've got three categories for goals. And so transitioning to. The next item on the agenda. Could we come back together and then maybe we just start with the, let's get down to brass tacks. The products.
Decision.
Yes.
So. I don't know if that's really my, my sheet, but we're looking at it.
Twenty twenty six, twenty three. One month from today.
A month from tonight, corresponding Tuesday in September. Tuesday, September twenty sixth.
It makes a huge difference.
Yeah.
It makes a huge difference.
I'm so talented.
That's just a weekend for a board meeting, that, that doesn't matter to me, but then we'll have seen each other three weeks in a row.
Then the weekend after that is a Tuesday, that is the week before the next board meeting.
Right.
Yeah, what do you guys want on the menu? So I, you know, I could go to nineteen. I could do any of those Tuesdays.
Okay, I, I.
But I'd like to see if we can't maybe. Throw one down.
Let's put it up. Mrs. Fox, what do you think, where are you available?
Pretty available.
Well, the nineteenth is my bunker night.
Why don't we do the twenty sixth?
Cause I'm not here. I'm at another conference, a public health conference. The third?
October third?
Does it have to be a Tuesday?
No.
Can it be a Thursday?
Pick a Thursday except the seventh.
So that would make it not okay. But maybe the twenty first.
Twenty first?
Yes, or the fourteenth. You got me, wish. September twenty first?
Thursday, twenty first, is that real? I don't know, two years.
Dinner, dinner available on five fifteen.
A witness where is. I think that's secret.
Somebody said twenty, I'm like, what are we doing? Or we could do what we did tonight, that works too, that was close up.
When do you come this year?
So we have September twenty first?
That's the other, the other thing we want to nail down before we leave is. I'd really like to have like a team dinner at the law conference. Where all just get together. Break bread, if it were.
And spousal units?
Sure.
The what?
And spousal units, I'm not bringing one, I'm just checking what you're suggesting. Sticking what we have.
Maybe we'll do something, you know, something like. Maybe we'll do some, you know, something like a tiger or basket or something. Taco Bell, informal, not that bad.
So in other words, we'll figure out what we're meeting. So in other words, keep that time open, don't make plans.
For Wednesday.
Twenty six. And Keith, are you bringing your event?
We're going to get it detailed if you.
Probably.
That was amazing. That was like the cleanest, non-new vehicle I've ever.
I can't say that we could be quite the same condition, we're very interested in reading this. There might be some stains on the floor. Might find some toys.
Yeah, I think it's, it's fun to do, like, that, to kind of get, get to know each other from work informally and laugh and do some chores.
Next week is already September, that's.
Is that right?
This week, this week, Friday.
We wish.
Okay, we have concluded all the items on this agenda.
So we know our, so we know our categories for goals.
We have four categories.
And we've got a plan moving forward for.
Pursuit evaluations.
In both cases.
Yes. We have dinner, we have a meeting time for us, and we have a dinner for me. And he's adjourned.